Hello and welcome to the session of the Board of Education's Work Session. We have a quorum with all members present and our student as well, and an exciting agenda. So let's get started. First up, discussion of the 2526 High School Program of Studies. Dr. Gary Willow, Associate Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction; Dr. Heath Wilcox, Executive Director of Secondary Ed; and Adam Perry, our Supervisor of Career Tech. Take it away, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Dr. Zentmeyer, members of the Board. Dr. Savine, it is our pleasure to present today the 2025-2026 High School Program of Studies. Just a couple of reminders due to update in the format. This is year two of a newer format where inside we try to present the most important information that a freshman student and parent and guardians might need to know. But for those that are reviewing this online, you'll notice many of the pages include QR codes that will take you to additional information on our website. Again, it's always a balance of having how much information in one program of studies, and we always, we know that for ninth grade, that's a challenging year, oftentimes for students and parents as they adjust to high school. So we always want to make sure that parents and guardians are aware that they can receive a lot of additional information by accessing those QR codes right to our website. The other thing that I just want to point out that this program of studies today is the Work Session. We reviewed this at Curriculum and Instruction in December, and then we are on pace for January at our Board of Education Public Meeting for approval. So today, no action. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Heath Wilcox.
Good afternoon. There are no changes to the minimum number of credits a student must earn to graduate. Students still need 24 credits to earn a high school diploma in Washington County. The specific credit requirements are listed on the screen, but they include four credits of English, four credits of math, three specific science, and three specific social studies classes, and then one credit of PE, one of health, one of fine arts, one of technology, and then six elective credits. Each student must earn at least one completer for graduation, and students can earn multiple completers. Completor options include the University of Maryland, which is known as UMD, and also career and technology education, or is sometimes referred to as a CTE completer. A University of Maryland completer includes two credits in the same world language and four math credits that include Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. Students who complete Algebra II before their senior year must take a math course each year thereafter that utilizes non-trivial algebra, and those courses could include college algebra, statistics, pre-calculus, and calculus. CTE completers, or career and technology completers, include completing an approved cluster of courses within a particular field of study. A complete listing of which career and technology education completers are offered at each high school can be found within the course of studies. College and career readiness, also known as CCR, is determined at the end of 10th grade. There are two options for a student to earn college and career readiness. Option one is a combination of earning an unweighted GPA of 3.0 or higher and earning a score proficient of 750 or higher on the Algebra I assessment, or earning a final grade of A, B, or C in Algebra I. The second option that's used at the end of 10th grade to determine if a student's met college and career readiness is if a student has earned a proficient score, which is a score of 750 or higher, on both the English 10 and the Algebra I MCAP assessment. If a student earns college and career readiness status at the end of 10th grade, they have additional post-college and career readiness pathway opportunities that they can pursue during 11th and 12th grade. For students who are not college and career ready, we must provide additional support by law during their junior and senior year or until students earn their college and career readiness status. The support offered allows students to prepare to take the English 10 or the Algebra I MCAP assessment again. Support can be provided through a support class embedded in another class, or through before and after-school tutoring opportunities. School staff works with each student and family on the best option based on previous test scores and the student's schedule.
Some of the post-CCR pathways that we discussed are the IB diploma program, our AP program, and of course, our early college dual-credit program. And Mr. Perry will review some of the CTE programs that are outlined in the Program of Studies as well. So IB diploma currently offered at North Hagerstown High School. This isn't a diploma option that students have the opportunity. All students can apply to the IB program at North Hagerstown High School. That application process is during their eighth-grade year. In order to earn the IB diploma, it's a minimum of five IB courses. And then if you remember back at our August Work Session, when we reviewed all of the IB assessment results, students have to earn a minimum of 24 points in order to earn the IB diploma. New for next year are some of the newer AP pathways. I'm going to start with the option all the way on the right, which is brand-new in Maryland. It's the Maryland AP option. All of our high schools offer enough AP courses for a student to possibly earn this AP option for Maryland. And what it means is that a student has to take at least two courses in the same content area and at least two content areas. So for example, that could be two social studies and two math AP courses, or two English or two science. And they have to earn a three or higher on at least three of those AP exams. AP assessments are given at the end of the course. They're administered by College Board that oversees, and all students take the same AP assessments. And on top of that, the last requirement, of course, is a C or higher in all of those AP courses. The two other programs that already exist are AP Capstone. And you can see for that, a little bit different with the requirements, specifically the AP Seminar and Research Course, and then there's flexibility around the other four AP courses a student may choose. We have AP Seminar currently. This was one of our brand-new courses last year, where our students exceeded the state and national average on the AP exam. Currently, it's offered at Clear Spring High School, North Hagerstown High School, South Hagerstown High School, and Smithburg High School. When we meet with principals, we'll make sure we review that that AP Seminar course is available for as long as their student interest to be offered at all of our high schools. AP Research is offered currently at Clear Spring High School, and they've had the Capstone program as part of their academy now for a couple of years. That's the last course you take, so typically, that's not something we would expect to see in other schools for a couple of years down the road yet. And the last one in the middle there is the AP International Diploma Program, and this is for students that are specifically looking at colleges outside of the United States.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about CTE and some changes that are coming from MSD. So just for background, if you're not familiar with the way CTE programs are structured, there's a traditional model we follow, and what that comes down to is CTE programs typically have three to four classes in them that students need to complete in order to earn the accreditation for that. What is important to remember for that is that the third course is typically the concentrator. And so that means that a student in that third course, when they complete it, they basically lock themselves into the completer, and they'll either complete it with that fourth course or by having that third course they're in. It means that those first two classes, though, serve as electives for us. So it's really about student exploration. Student can go through, take those first two classes, really decide, do I like this completer? And if they don't, they can move on to something else. With the changes coming down for next school year, what MSD is doing is it's taking that third course concentrator status, and it's now moving it to the second course. And there's two impacts from that. The impact initially is that for a student in that completer, when they get to that third course, they're now going to have the option to either take that third course or go out into an apprenticeship opportunity and substitute that for the course. So it opens up a lot more avenues for students on the back end. It limits us, though, a little bit on the front end of it. So instead of having those two classes that we could have used for electives, now we're limited to one. So we've come up with a strategy to largely work around that, and that's going to be with these electives that we're going to put to your consideration. What they're going to do is serve as kind of like a pre-program elective. It allows a student to go into it and ultimately learn about the course before going into the first course. And we've piloted a little bit of that at South Hagerstown High School. So if you take their carpentry program, you have carpentry, you have the foundations class, Carpentry II, and then the Capstone. What we've done in South Hagerstown is taken and created a cabinet-making class to serve as that same principal. So allow students to kind of explore the woodworking aspect, and if they like it, they can then go into the first course, and if they really want to continue, they'll continue on. For freshmen, that model seems to work well. So by the time they hit their sophomore year, they'll know whether they want to go into that completer full-time or if they don't. So these are all completers that were electives that we need to introduce, and the premise behind this, we sat with teachers, and it's largely them helping to create what this will be. But it opens up avenues for students to go and continue to have that exploration process, and it allows it easier for scheduling when it comes down for students moving forward in this new flex model. And then some other changes that have come about deal with computer science. So with this, it's really just rebranding it. It's new changes coming down from MSD. We find that with the AP stigma, sometimes students that are capable are just a little bit less willing to go into it. So what we're doing is really just rebranding it so we're not creating those barriers. So in doing all of this, it doesn't add any additional costs. It doesn't add any additional staffing. It's really just providing more flexibility and avenues for students to have access to curriculum and learning.
New also this year are the idea of endorsements. An endorsement is what will go on a student's transcript once they graduate. So this is something that has passed through the Maryland State Department of Education by our state board, and so this year, this is something that impacts all of our graduating students this year. So if we go back to what Dr. Wilcox shared, he shared the requirements of how a student becomes college and career ready. Any student that is college and career ready by the end of their senior year will have an endorsement, a stamp on their transcript that says they are CCR. The other way that you can earn an endorsement this year is by completing a CTE completer pathway, which is what Mr. Perry just reviewed. And again, for those listening and for our new Board members, on page 33 of your Program of Studies handout, you can actually see all of those programs by school. For next year, so this would be 2025, 2026, and beyond, there are new endorsements coming. And so when we look at these endorsements, we have science, technology, engineering, and math, which is STEM, business and industry, the multidisciplinary studies, public service, arts, and humanities. And how a student will earn an endorsement through this program is actually by completing the CTE pathway and passing the industry-recognized credential. That is the CTE assessment. That's part of that program that happens toward the conclusion of the CTE program. And then we have middle school program studies.
So the middle school program studies, similar to the high school one, is really about adding additional electives for students to give them opportunities and exploration. And all of these really tie into and lead to a high school completer at some point. Some of them are county-wide based, like the first three. Some are specific to Boonsboro High School with its ag program, and then there are some specific to Hancock Middle School High School. But all of them are designed to provide students with exploration, the administrators of the schools, kind of the tools necessary from a scheduling standpoint, but ultimately really to lead students and plant seeds that they're interested in our completed programs when they get to ninth grade.
And we'll spend a little more time in February at our Work Session, or excuse me, at our Board meeting for the middle school program. We're currently redesigning that so it looks more like the high school program studies. We will not be asking for your approval yet for the middle school at our January meeting. Once the design is complete, we'll share it, and we'll ask for middle school approval at our February Board meeting. And with that, I'll take, or the team will take, any questions. Thank you.
Questions? None? All that information. Daphne?
I just had a quick question. So with the budget deficit and the cuts in blueprint from the state, does that affect our county in any way, or how does that affect other counties as well with their CTE and their blueprint spending?
That's an excellent question, and I think some of that is to be determined, what comes out of the General Assembly this year and any changes. We're not, in terms of CTE, in terms of our programs, we're not looking for any increases in funding, and we're not expecting. CTE has a maintenance-of-effort clause, which means you spend the same amount you did the previous year. So we're not expecting cuts within CTE. We're not expecting drastic changes with what we presented today. We do think that there will probably be other areas within the blueprint that could change.
Thank you.
I know this question gets asked every year, and I never remember the answer. Did we change it so that, or not necessarily we, but the state changes so that finance does count towards a math credit?
Yes. So financial literacy is listed in our Program of Studies. It counts as a math course, but certainly, if students have their four math courses, they could also take that as an elective class.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Jennifer Webster, our Associate Superintendent for Administration and Leadership, with a discussion on one of my favorite topics, Innovative Learning Center update.
Good afternoon, President Zentmeyer, members of the Board, and Dr. Savine. As Dr. Zentmeyer just shared, I'm here to provide you with an update on our Innovative Learning Center, or the ILC, as we call it. You may recall last year, we shared with the Board and the community a change to how our school system organizes secondary educational program that operates outside of the typical comprehensive high school experience. So the Innovative Learning Center is housed at the Antietam School site, and this center now combines what we formerly operated in different spaces and under separate supervision, specifically our virtual programming, Twilight and Evening High, as well as our Behavior Support Program. Now, we refer to our virtual program as Connected. If you look up on the slide, the blue square. Our Twilight and Evening High, in the purple there, is Extended. And our Behavior Support Program is provided in both our Elected, the green and the blue supported programming. All of these programs are now under the supervision of Principal Dr. Kane Kirkpatrick, who I thank for joining us in the audience today. Our goal in combining these programs is both for efficiency from the system perspective in terms of staffing, but it's also to provide our families with one school and one team to work with when they're looking for alternatives to the comprehensive secondary school experience. So today, I'm going to walk us through each of the four programs and share with you how they are going. So first, let's look at our virtual program. Our Connected Virtual School is a synchronous, live teaching schedule for students that mirrors the secondary bell schedule for our in-person school. Our enrollment at the secondary virtual school is very similar to last year's enrollment, and that's largely because our staffing for the classes remains the same. When we take a look at the waitlist for each of the grades, from grade six to 12, you can see that there is an increased demand for virtual classes in secondary this year there on the waitlist. We attempted to reduce the waitlist, we had a creative idea, by adding sections of the core content areas by offering temporary adjunct employment to possible teaching candidates outside the system, and we thought we were there last month or so, but unfortunately, we could not line all four subject areas up at the same time, because you need a full schedule in order to create new sections. So we were not able to launch those additional sections, which we had hoped would have cleared our waitlist there particularly in grade eight and in the high school. So we continue to look for adjunct teachers interested in teaching sections, and we continue to move students into the virtual classes from the waitlist as soon as we have space. So now let's shift to Extended. For the Extended program, these are the courses that we offer at the ILC in person, after school, and in the evening. So we have students who take classes in Extended alongside their comprehensive high school classes, and we have students who are working to earn their diploma solely by taking classes as part of the Extended program. This year, we've streamlined enrollment in Extended for our students. Once a parent expresses interest in Extended programming, the ILC staff works with the homeschool counselor to ensure we get the student enrolled in the classes they need. We currently have 119 students who are engaged in the Extended classes this fall, which is up from 92 students last fall, and we also anticipate higher enrollment in the spring. So now let's look at Elected. So our students in the Elected program are a subset of the Supported. So these two groups of students are both taking courses in person at the ILC. The Elected program offers students the opportunity to apply, to take the initiative that they would like to opt into taking courses at the ILC. The students may desire to take them there versus their homeschool because they value the smaller learning environment, and we have some students who've opted to apply to take courses there because they had previously attended the ILC as part of the Behavior Support Program, and they found it something that worked for them, and they want to continue taking classes there. We currently have 31 11th and 12th graders who are enrolled in the Elected program, and we anticipate that that number will increase, as we have heard from our high schools that there are additional students interested in applying, so we will be opening applications for the spring. The Supported program is our Behavior Support Program that provides targeted classroom instruction designed to help students grow in their behavioral as well as their academic goals. Our students, or our staff who work with the students in the Supported program, receive ongoing professional learning on planning instruction that helps students with both of these goals. Students access Supported programming by referral from their comprehensive middle or high school, as well as agreement from their parent guardian to participate in the alternative placement. Before a student is referred to the Supported program, the home middle or high school puts interventions in place to attempt to meet the behavioral needs of the students, but there are some students who need additional support beyond what we can provide in the homeschool. In those cases, we can admit the student to the Supported program for 45 days after that referral from the homeschool, and after 45 days, there's a review of the student's progress to determine if the student is ready to return to their homeschool. The review of student progress within 45 days is designed to align with MSD guidelines for student removal from the comprehensive educational program. Students can stay in the Supported program beyond 45 days with parent agreement, and after the school team has assessed the student's progress and determined that there is a continued need to stay in the program. We currently have 60 students enrolled in Supported, and I've mentioned that students can access Supported by referral from the homeschool, but students can also be placed into the Supported program or the Virtual Connected program through an extended suspension or expulsion. There is no parent guardian approval when the students are placed through the discipline process. Our students who receive a long-term suspension, which is between 11 and 44 days, or an expulsion, which is anything beyond 45 days, are placed in the Supported program if it's determined that in-person is the appropriate placement. We have some that are also placed in the Connected program for their extended suspension or expulsion. I also want to mention that there is an Enhanced Summit Classroom at the ILC, which is Summit is our special education program for students with emotional disabilities. So we're currently serving 10 students who have IEP needs that require enhanced programming beyond the comprehensive high school Summit program. So in summary, at our ILC, as of December, we're currently serving 361 students through four different programs. You see there the Virtual Connected program, the Extended after-school and evening classes, and then the Elected Supported in-person courses, and the 10 students who are in the Enhanced Summit Classroom. So at this point, I turn it back over to you, Dr. Zentmeyer, for discussion.
Do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
I need to find it. For the Connected, once a student is enrolled, so I saw that there was a waitlist, and so I was just curious, once they're enrolled, do they ever get waitlisted? Or like if you're in it for sixth grade, you're guaranteed to be in it for seventh and so forth?
Yes. So what we do each spring is we check to see who would like to, actually, I think we discussed bumping it up, so I'll be asking soon, who would like to continue, and so they just roll over into the next year.
Okay. Cool.
So the students who attend the Center, ILC, have the hub bus available to them, correct? That's how they get to school?
Yes, they get bus transportation.
So the kids, the students that are on the waitlist for Innovative, could they not just go to school at the ILC until, not able, whatever it's called now, opens up?
They could if they applied through Elected. They could apply, so essentially, once a parent expresses interest, Dr. Kane Kirkpatrick and her team would work to see what could the programming be. So to your point, if there's not a seat in virtual open, maybe we could start with getting them into classes in Extended, or maybe they would like to apply for Elected instead. So that is one of the benefits, to your point about having it under one roof, that maybe we don't have space in the virtual, but maybe we can do something else at the ILC that would meet their needs.
And do they, what vehicle do we have to tell students that? Like, how do they know they can do that?
So we've met with, last year, when we launched this change, Dr. Kane Kirkpatrick and Dr. Wilcox and I went out and met with all of the school counselors, administrators, and created flyers for all of the schools so that as counselors are working with students, they can share, here are some alternative options. If going to school in a bell schedule that goes from this time to this time, all the periods of the day, doesn't work, and we're not able to meet your needs here, there's some creative options we could do at the ILC. And we're seeing that there is an increased demand after last year's advertisement of the ILC. Our waitlist for virtual is longer than what it was last year, and the interest in Extended has increased. So there's definitely a gaining awareness of the opportunities there. So I think we need to continue to find those avenues that when families have questions, connecting with the ILC to see is there something there that might meet their needs is a great thing.
So those students who are on the waitlist know that there's an alternative to their homeschool that they can access?
The counselors would talk them through that, yeah. Let's talk about if there's something else that might be a fit. Absolutely.
Can, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ashley.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me? I don't know. Okay. What is the maximum capacity for Supported?
So we don't necessarily put a number on that in terms of enrollment in the classroom. We would basically adjust to meet student needs, which is what we have done. So if there is, we make constant adjustments, like Dr. Kane Kirkpatrick. At one point, we didn't have as many, we reduced middle school sections to add high school sections because that's where a need was. So we try to be flexible based on what the demand is to make sure that if there are students out there who need seats, we rework the staffing to figure out how to support that. And our teachers who work at the ILC are extremely flexible, and we've asked them to do all kinds of things. We need you to teach a virtual section of this, or we need you to do that, and they work with us to try to make sure that we can meet the needs of the students.
So how many seats are available?
I don't know if we think of it in terms of seats, but...
Well, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, because this is a question I had, how many, what is the overall capacity of Antietam Academy? Is that what you're asking?
I want to know how many students who need this support are able to be in there. Is 60 the maximum? Can we do 120? Because behavior has by far been the biggest issue of talking to everyone this election cycle, and I think that everyone deserves to know how many open seats that we have to help with that situation.
I think that it would be a matter of, if the need is there, we would need to match the need. So that is how we've approached it. I think it's really important to note that as we've received, as all of our schools have been confronted with different student behavioral issues, our secondary and elementary are different. So this is a very secondary conversation right now, just to keep in mind, too. So our secondary schools, one of the things we've had to think about is how do we create more, or how do we allow for more creativity in the comprehensive schools for students who... for students who, as I mentioned earlier, coming from the beginning of the day to the end of the day is not something that meets their needs with where they're at right now for a variety of reasons. So thinking about how in next month, we'll have Dr. Gaiman here to present the work they did at South High. To be able to meet the needs of their students and the infusion of resources into their building and the way they've approached creative scheduling with students, because a lot of times the behavior happens because students aren't engaged or their needs aren't being met. So how can we, instead of just forcing them to, everyone's going to do the same thing, how do we adjust the programming to make sure that we're not just banging our head against a wall? So we really push ourselves, to your point about how do we make sure there are enough seats? We really push ourselves to, if there are needs, we need to adapt what we're doing to be able to create those seats and those opportunities for students.
So what's the state-rated capacity of Antietam Academy, then?
I'm not sure exactly, like technically, how many students? Okay, great. Thanks, Mr. Pro.
Anticipated the question, so I looked it up as the conversation was evolving. The state-rate capacity for that building is 200 students. That's impacted by the number of classroom spaces you have available. So if classroom spaces have been utilized for teachers that are teaching the virtual program, the connected ed program, that reduces your state-rated capacity. So off the top of my head, not knowing how many classrooms have been impacted.
Could you go back and miss that part? So the students learning online?
Students learning online because you have several teachers teaching online out of one classroom. I think three or four to a classroom, two to a classroom. So as you have teachers teaching out of a particular classroom, that reduces the amount of state-rated capacity you have for students to be in those classrooms at that time. So you could, in theory, relocate the connected ed portion to free up classroom seats if that would be how the board seats fit. We'd have to determine another central location to produce those classrooms from. One of the keys with the connected program is students are not always virtual. So when they need to take assessments, they need to get to a program. So we try to find a central location that we have to do the connected ed program so that when students do need to access the program actually in-person, it's not a remote location. We have space available, of course, in remote locations, but we've tried to house those district-wide programs centrally.
And can you kind of walk me how, and thank you, Jeff, I appreciate that. Can you kind of walk me through how, because I know when Dr. Zetmeyer and I went to visit, geez, that was five, six months ago, now I'm guessing. We talked about the application process. Can you refresh my memory? How does that look? What does it look like for, for instance, a student with a behavioral referral going from the time that that student is referred to, the time that the student is enrolled? Can you kind of walk us through that process?
And there's two ways. When we talk about students being referred for behavioral reasons, one way is if they get an extended suspension. So an extended suspension is one where we have 10 days to turn around. They are suspended and within 10 days, we're required to determine if their suspension will be beyond 10 days, in which case we're required to still provide educational services, which some of the students are placed in-person then at the ILC. Some of them might be placed virtually, depending on what happened with the incident and what student services determine. So within 10 days, we have to determine so that by the 11th day, they're wherever they would be. In terms of the students who are being referred for alternative placement, like if a homeschool says, we have done what we can do. We're really struggling to meet the needs of Dr. Webster. We think that a short-term alternative placement is required to support her behavioral growth. Then they can make that referral up to Friday of a week and the meetings are then held the next Wednesday and the decisions are that Thursday of whether or not the student, if the student is going to be admitted, there needs to be parent agreement to a change of placement because it's not the discipline route, but that can all happen within a week.
Is it, so do you have an example, not necessarily of a student, but of a reason why a student would be referred to go to supported from just say, Smithburg Middle School?
Yeah, great question. So Smithburg Middle School might have a student who is struggling to stay in class, who has a short temper with peers or adults. And they've tried different, we've tried to modify the schedule. We've had meetings with the student. We've even maybe started to do like a child find process to determine, does a student need additional, does a student qualify for special education and need an IEP geared that way? But maybe that wasn't it. They are just really struggling to figure out because the student isn't then accessing an educational program because they're out of class, they're disrupting other students. Then they bring that student forward to the referral team to say, here's the things we've done. Do you have any thoughts about what else we could do? Or do we think that this is the appropriate placement? And then that's where the team decides, the ILC team, which includes a member from my office, members from the ILC, a pupil personnel worker, someone from special ed, if it's a special ed student. They have that discussion and then the student would be admitted if we decide to admit. And if we don't admit, then we bring that student back up in four weeks. We check in unless the school reaches out to us, like let's say two weeks. We talk about some strategies, the student goes back, it's not working. The school can reach out and say, we'd like to put Jen back on the agenda. So they put me back on the agenda and then usually the student would likely, if we've gone through that far, would likely be admitted.
Because like Ashley was saying, you know, that is, in my opinion, the biggest crisis we have in our school system is the behavioral referrals. And, you know, last year, I mean, jeez, we saw just a couple of days before the end of the year, I think there was almost 20,000 total behavioral referrals written. And based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like it's pretty well the same this year. I'd love for that to be part of the discussion when we talk about the BCBA's next month. You know, what do the referrals look like? Because from what I'm hearing from community members, only 60 students and even if they're all in supported, you know, but that's even split with elected. You know, the numbers just don't seem to add up to me and it really seems like there's not much disciplinary action being taken. And when I went to visit South High, for example, I really appreciated what Dr. Gaiman was doing. And he's done a great job in turning around a lot of those concerns that we've been seeing. But my concern was that many of the students that were given the ability to be in a kind of an alternative setting, but still in the general setting, so to speak, they weren't the ones that were causing the disruptions. They seemed to me, at least, and I could be wrong, he could go and discuss this next month, they seemed to just have anxiety. That I would be very curious to know, is that because of all the behavior problems we have? I actually spoke with a parent this morning who said that their child gets extreme anxiety. She can't stand Sunday evening, knowing that she has to wake up and go to school on Monday morning. And she just has such great anxiety. And this is a phenomenal child that is, quite frankly, a scholar. And it worries me when we see that, you know. And I really thought more of this discussion was going to be based around the Antietam part of it because I had some very specific questions that I asked that I guess aren't going to be answered. I don't know when I originally asked for this to be on the agenda. I wanted to know, given the fact that we can have 260 students at Antietam Academy and there's only 60 students there during the day, you know, I got to imagine if those 200 kids were the, if we filled that with 200 more kids, I would be willing to bet that 90% of our problems would go away overnight. And maybe that's not the answer, maybe it is, I don't know. But it really just doesn't seem to me like we're really doing anything different. We're just making it more difficult to remove some of these problems. And, you know, it's frustrating to me, it's frustrating to the parents. It's sad for the kids who do want to learn that are scared to death to go to school because in the student's words, it's a zoo. And, you know, I just feel like there's more we could be doing. And, you know, I mean, I think there are a lot of efficiency that we have created with the Innovated Learning Center. But, you know, is it what actually was best? And based on what I'm hearing about the behaviors, I really just don't see it. And so I'm hoping that we could continue to evaluate this and go in and evolve as we need to. I appreciate the fact that we tried to do something. Is it working? And I don't know the answer to that. I'm not in the schools every day with the teachers and kids. But based on what I'm hearing, it really doesn't seem like we're doing enough.
Yeah, and I really appreciate where you're kind of taking the through line of the, I think when we all came back post-COVID, I'm tired of that refrain, but here we are. When we all came back and looking at, it was when I joined the team, too, very shortly after, here in Washington County. And the conversation was, how are we going to evolve? What our programming looks like? Because we have a larger number of students. So in the past, when we look at, and Antietam Academy, as Mr. Evans just said, would be what we would look at as elected-supported. So when we look at the way that Antietam Academy was serving students pre-COVID, we had more students who need behavioral support in secondary than what we had before. And just to take us back a little bit in history, pre-COVID, from what I understand, the district had started to evaluate what to do with Antietam Academy because it was, there were some safety concerns around the way that that learning environment was functioning. And how are we going to, when we, so they had paused enrollment and also been working to come into compliance with MSDE regulations for access to alternative ed, which is a minor tweak in the sense of we need to just demonstrate that we've done things in the home program, parent agreement, and students can be transferred to alternative placement for 45 days. So that work happened. And then when we returned from COVID, at the same time, we had an increased need. And we also had South High, where the decision was made to infuse resources into South High. Who was our largest contributor to students who attended Antietam Academy before? So Mr. Gaiman's presentation next month, I think, will be very interesting. To your point, Mr. Evans, about what they did at South High to create different options for students within the educational program within that building? Because there's, I think there's a lot we can extrapolate from that to think about the resources that other schools need. Our city middle schools have received a behavior support teacher and two paraeducators to support students within their building. That is helping them tremendously to be able to meet their students' needs. So, and we have the virtual option, too. So at the, all of the things that happened post-COVID, we had the infusion of resources into South. We have the addition of the virtual option for secondary, which is a better option for some students who need to or prefer to not interact with others in a face-to-face manner. It's also just better learning for some students the way they learn. So we had that piece. We have new opportunities to take courses in extended and evening high. So there's a lot of options out there and we're definitely still in the building phase of figuring out ways that we better adapt our programming rather than expecting all students to do the same thing and access in the same way. We have success stories with programs that are interest-based, with Tech High and BISFA. We know there's pieces where schools really operate around what student interests are. But your point is well-taken, Mr. Evans, around the challenge of how do we adapt to the growing need that we see from our students? Because it also extends beyond what we do during the school day in terms of what their needs are.
And thank you for that. Like I said, I really don't know what the answer is. I have some ideas. I don't know if they're the right answers or not. I'm happy to offer them if they're asked for. But my biggest concern is that it seems like we are being so lenient on these kids, and I don't know if that's the right word, but it's the one I'll use. We're being so lenient on these kids who are disrupting the general learning environment that the kids who truly want to be there, who are historically great students and, you know, enjoy being in school, we are almost ruining that experience for them. And I understand things take time, but, man, I've been on the board for four years now and that's what I keep being told. And, you know, I mean, we just, every single kid is in a new school at that point, you know? I don't know, I just, it's frustrating when we say that we need more time. I understand that no one knows what the answer is, but I think we need to pick it up a little bit.
Linda?
Thank you. I want to say thank you for this idea. I know it's a work in progress. 361 students are enrolled and you're helping them, which is a good start. So any plan does need to be tweaked. And I know you are constantly, you and your staff are constantly looking at it and trying to find ways to make it better. I know that a lot of the schools, middle schools, high schools, even elementary schools, have behavior support programs in their schools. So it's not like this is the only thing that we have. And constantly looking at those programs, how we can make them better, what we can do to support the staff, what we can do to support these kids, these parents who, they don't know what to do with the kids. I mean, it's a real problem. And we appreciate everything that you and the staff are doing to try to help these kids and help the teachers. Because it's a problem. Daryl's right. It's a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley?
I have children and I think that the problem is there are no consequences anymore. And we have gotten so far away from consequences that this is the area that we're at. That was the first thing I wanted to say. Second, I love the fact that we have something for 6th through 12th grade. And I know that it's hard whenever it comes to elementary school, but I think the hardest area is pre-K to second. What can we do for 3rd through 5th grade? Because the earlier that we can get these children, the additional help that they need, we might actually have success by the time they hit, you know, middle school and high school. So what is being done for that age group?
Great. You are so correct. The pre-K to 2 is definitely our most impacted group. And each year, we've, each year in the last four years, we've done something a little different to try to address the elementary behavioral needs. And I'd like to ask if I can put a pin in that because we're working on the next iteration of our planning because we have the concept of, we have more students coming into pre-K who have such cognitive and behavioral needs. A lot of undiagnosed special education needs, a lot of possible mental health issues that are so outside the bounds of anything that we've worked with that our number of students have outpaced our program spaces. So where we typically would have placed some of these students into a special education program, we've kept more in co-taught or general classrooms just by sheer volume. So we've had to really cut, and we don't have a lot of non-public options for support for this group of students. So we've tried a number of things, we've added additional classrooms, and we are in our next version of thinking. And we do have, as Mrs. Murray said, we have behavior support programs in elementary. But these students have needs that are beyond just behavior support in a lightweight, like we've approached it. So I'd like to return to that topic, if you don't mind, because we have a further.
Was that for pre-K through second?
Pre-K to 2, yeah.
What about 3rd to 5th, where we can actually do some things?
So with grades 3 to 5, I think they fall under, they're really at the, they've kind of become the, we're so focused on pre-K to 2 that grades 3 to 5, our resources are strained as we look at program seat space is being occupied by pre-K to 2. I think 3 to 5, we have opportunities to, I think, 3 to 5 is not, when we talk to our principals, grades 3 to 5 are not the kids that are the most impacted right now. If they are, they're ones that we can work with and start to place. It's really pre-K to 2 where we have the volume that is a bigger challenge. But it's all a picture because, to your point, when things are not addressed in pre-K to 2, they continue as an issue in grades 3 to 5. So if we can get pre-K to 2 in a better place and have strong options there, then we are better able to handle grades 3 to 5.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, just, just real quick, just following.
Just real quick, just falling on Mr. Evans' comment about children being afraid in school, you know, I, I heard a couple, from a couple of parents, especially with the bathrooms, that children are afraid to use the bathrooms. But I'd be curious, what is the average stay for a child in, or a student in Antietam? And do you all track the success rate? How many kids end up going back, or?
That's an excellent question. I don't know that we're prepared to answer that. You could anecdotally answer? Yeah, that's a great question.
Good, I was going to ask you to come up anyway, so you could add what you wanted to, so this is good. This is Dr. Rachel Kane Kirkpatrick, and she is the principal at Innovated.
Yeah, so typically our.
Is, is, is it called Innovated now and not Antietam Academy?
No, it's no longer Antietam Academy.
Okay.
Rebrand it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be elected, supported, is what we would have previously called Antietam Program.
All right.
Yeah.
So, so typically, to your question about how long students average, so our goal is 90 days or less. We do a review at 45, and we're pretty successful. Around 78% of our students will return at 90 days. The rest of them stay as long as they need. We don't send kids back if we don't feel that they've made enough progress to be successful behaviorally. And in terms of do kids that go back then return, that does happen. We're talking about the students with the most need behaviorally, and so even 90 days, 45 days, it, it takes a while to fix behavior sometimes, so they, we do see them come back. And Dr. Webster mentioned that a lot of our students who applied for the elected program are students who formally came as behavior students, and they did really, really well, so they decided they wanted to stay, so they applied to come back. So the majority of our elected students are former students. I call it behavior rehab. They've been rehabbed, and they, they, they've decided that they like us so much. I mean, I always say that at orientation, because a lot of people are mad when they come to our school, they don't want to be there when they get sent there. And I tell them at orientation, you're mad right now, but you're going to like us, and you're going to want to stay, and that usually is the case. My staff is amazing at what they do and working with these children. And I wanted to comment, Mr. Evans, while the numbers, you know, I have 12 high school teachers and six middle school teachers. My science labs are rated for eight students and classrooms for 10, so we're talking at high school, around 116 students would comfortably, would fit. The seats are open. I have a review meeting, Wednesdays come, we have review meetings every week, and there's no one signing up to come to review. So if, if they were coming, there, there's space for them to be there.
What does a, I'm sorry, Mike, did you have anything?
I have a few questions.
Yeah, go ahead. Charlie, were you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Webster, you had said, let's put a pin on that time. Could you give me a timeframe that you're thinking that you will come back and, and present to us on that 12th?
Um, maybe.
Pre-K?
March or April?
March would be perfect. Are any of these 361 students, or any of those duplicated numbers?
No, so the elected, supported are, those are 60, so, no, the 361 are unique students, but the elected, supported, on the one slide, it has 31 and then 60. So 31 of the 60 are elected, they chose to come, they applied.
So they're not receiving, I mean, you're not duplicating that number, that's a total of 90 some?
There might, there might be a duplicate, because some of my in-person day kids do take evening high. It's only like two or three.
Okay, so it is just small.
It's pretty, it's a small number.
Okay, sometimes they do that, and then they just add the number, and it looks, it might be inflated, so, as long as we're not inflating that. And the final question, are we required to wait a week when we have a disciplinary issue in a school that we have to, can we, can we make that quicker, or do we have to wait?
Oh, no, great, great question. So if there's a disciplinary issue, the student would be suspended immediately from the school, and then we have 10 days to do the investigation to confirm what, what should the, should it be an expulsion, should it be a 45-day suspension? So it, it is, the student's immediately removed, and then it's just, we need time to determine, Student Services takes over investigating, is this warranting an expulsion, or is it warranting a 44-day suspension, or is it just going to be a 10-day suspension?
So do, do we have to wait that 10 days before that, or is it something that can be? I mean, we don't want students, we don't want students being out of a classroom, we want them to be in a learning environment. So is there a reason why it's taking so long?
Great question, yeah. It doesn't have to take 10 days, it just can take, because of the meetings that have to be coordinated, the work that has to be done to determine, but it doesn't always take the whole 10 days. If the student has an IEP, we need to hold a manifestation meeting, so you have to get folks together for that. But we are required to do it within 10 days for the reason that you stated. They don't want students to be unnecessarily out of programming when they need, if they've committed a discipline act, they need to be connected with education in some way. So we have to do it within 10 days.
Okay.
But it could be shorter.
Okay. Mr. Evans?
For those, I guess, intake meetings, I think is what you call them, when you meet on Wednesdays, what information are you asking for from the principals to determine if the kid is a good fit or not?
So we ask to basically just hear what's going on. Like, they tell us, it's a conversation where they share with us, it's not necessarily the principal, it's usually the assistant principal who's working with the student, sometimes another staff member who's working with the student. But they share with us essentially, tell us what, what's going on? What are you seeing? What, what have you put in place? What have you tried? We just try to make sure, and some, some schools bring students who they're not necessarily looking to, to remove the student, they're just looking for advice and ideas that they would like to get feedback and input on. And then we start that collaborative conversation of, you know what, maybe the alternative programming might be the, the right fit, or maybe there's just some ideas that we can offer to look at some different ways to think about supporting the student. So it's really just more of a, it's not, they're not required to do any certain thing, it's more of a conversation about, tell us what you've done, let's talk it through.
Because that, that kind of raised my eyebrows a little bit when you said, I think you said there's no, no students that you need to meet with to discuss tomorrow? That, that raised my eyebrows a little bit, that, that makes me question the process a little bit. Are we making it so difficult for the principals that they're just not willing to go and, or they, they can or don't have the time or resources or whatever to do all the work to be able to go and put them, to, to be able to have that meeting to start with?
Yeah, no, it's not an onerous, it's not an onerous process to come and present. We, we have, I think it's important to note, though, that we have, and you'll hear this when Mr. Gammon shares his presentation from South, we have additional opportunities within comprehensive schools for high schools to work with their students without necessarily transferring them to the alternative programming. So when you hear Mr. Gammon talk about the way they approach supporting students, there's a lot that we can do within our comprehensive school to adjust the day for students, so that they, and it might not be behavior that's the specific issue, it might be that they, it's evening and, and afternoon classes is going to work for that student. So they would not come through the review process for that, they would just apply straight and go right into that. So it's really just a matter of, we have a lot of other options now compared to what we had five years ago. They can also apply to be in virtual instruction. There's just a lot more ways to meet kids' needs than what we had even five years ago.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I had, I need a clarification for the supported, so they can only be placed there if parents agree to it?
Correct.
Even if it's a behavioral referral?
Even if it's a behavioral, if it's referred for behavior support, but they haven't done anything like a discipline infraction, then we do have to have parent agreement for an alternative placement. But if they did something that warrants a suspension, there's no choice.
There's no choice.
Yeah.
Okay, and then with these meetings that you do on Wednesday, have you ever denied entry for any students?
We have, yeah. So there will be students who we say, here's some ideas, it's, I don't know if it's a deny entry as much as it's a, here's some things to try, and here's who we're going to send out to help you, to come out to support, or here's some things that you should think about. And then, like I mentioned earlier, if we have that conversation and the student still needs support, then we bring them back to a later meeting and discuss, okay, we tried what you said, and it's still not working, conversation.
Do you know the percentage that you offer advice versus accepting?
So this year, we've held nine review meetings, and of the nine, four students were immediately admitted, and the others were, we gave feedback, and if they need to come back, then they'll come back.
Nine is in this calendar year?
As in since Aug, well, we started in October. Yeah.
I think that kind of speaks to Daryl's point, is, you know, if they're taking time out of their day and saying, this is what we need, this is what we feel is best, and then they're told, well, you know, maybe we should try some different stuff, what's the point of keep coming back if they do need help, if they're just going to be told to try things that obviously aren't working?
Good point. The conversation is really meant to be a collaborative one, that is a problem solving, so not, when staff come, they're not always saying, I need you to take Dr. Webster now. It is really a conversation of, and we've said, bring students who you are just like starting to get an inkling of, oh, I'm starting to worry that this might be something more than what we can handle. So it's not always like a, I just need this student to, to transfer right now. If we have a, if a student comes to a meeting and there's a safety concern, we had a couple this year where, the minute the assistant principal started talking, we said, we will make that, like, this is happening, like, this will happen as soon as possible. So if they come to us with a safety concern, or it's something that is immediate, then we make the immediate admittance and move quickly to do that. But we've really worked to make it a collaborative conversation around a problem solving, and let's talk about what is happening and how we could support, and is this the right option for the student? And it helps also that the student and the family are then on board, in the sense of, this is the thing that we've talked about as a, as a good thing for me. And, and the learning environment at the ILC, I will say, is extremely positive and supportive. And it's a, I know we're talking a lot about discipline and behavior, but it really is, especially the students who are there from elected, they, they're choosing to be there. And so when we have students who are struggling with behavior, and we have a meeting, and, you know, Dr. Kane Kirkpatrick can say, this is a great place to come, and we will be able to help you learn the skills that you need, it, it's true. Like, it doesn't seem like you're going to, you know, someplace that's going to be awful. So it really is a healthy learning environment for our students, and that's a huge, you know, testament to Dr. Kane Kirkpatrick's work and her staff, they've done an excellent job. And with our leaders, you know, our building leaders are working hard to try to find creative ways to meet their kids' needs, but if they bring us a student, we know that this is a student that they're really struggling with. So I appreciate your question, because yes, we, we do want schools to feel supported through this process of, this is another option, if you have students that you, you're not be able to meet their needs.
Do you speak with the teachers? Or is it just principals? Because the teachers, I would say, are probably the ones who are more so dealing with the issues every single day, and sometimes, whenever you play telephone, it gets not as severe.
Yeah. The, the assistant principals, or the, sometimes the teachers come, the, in the four city middle schools, the behavior support teacher sometimes comes to share. So we hear from a teacher in that case, but the assistant principals often share with us the teacher voice and data that teachers have collected through that venue. But to your point, they're not always directly involved in the conversation.
President Zemirene?
Yes, you may have a chance to.
Yeah. Well, I, I just want to say how much our team appreciates the engagement and the questions of the board. That helps us to reflect and review in terms of practice and, and how we can also improve. But from a context standpoint, I know, as we just met earlier today with board leadership, with agenda planning, our next meeting next month, we're, we have, we're going to have our South High School principal, Mr. Gammon, that will be here. You've heard reference in this presentation, over the last two and a half years, we've changed the, the level of supports in the school, and you're going to be able to see that from firsthand, from the, from Mr. Gammon. And previous Antietam alternative setting, most of our students at that initially, two and a half years ago, were actually coming out of South High. So I think that's another big element for you to hear. And we've also utilized the, the South High model to also transform where possible in, in some of our other comprehensive high schools. So that has helped inform us from that standpoint. I think the other important piece is, we're just focusing today on the secondary piece. At our next work session, we will be getting into a conversation in terms of how our behavior, BCBA's are, are providing supports, and most of that is structured and supports the elementary demand. We've heard the conversation that the most significant impact is at the pre-K through first grade level. So we'll, we'll come, our team will come prepared to share, and most importantly, perhaps, it could, it will be shared through the, the lens of principals, and perhaps maybe some, some teachers that are experiencing this. So I just wanted to mention that for the benefit of this board.
Thank you. And thank you, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add lastly, so we're talking a lot about numbers, everyone wants a hard number for how many kids can fit into my building, and we can give you a number of how many fit. Students who are struggling emotionally and behaviorally, we often say, count more than one body. They take a lot of resources, and so while the number might be 120, it might be 160, whatever the number is, we try to look at it as, based on the, the human resources I have, how many students can we serve? Because we could pack students into that building, which has done, been done before, and it was very unsafe, and, and students were not getting the rehab that I like to say that we give them now, because we're, we're sized differently, because we think about the resources needed to support these kids. So I want you to remember that. We get students, and it wasn't mentioned, but we get students through reportable offense, so students who are committing crimes in the community come into our program, DJS transition students, so students coming out of detention facilities come through our program. So we're getting a lot of students with very high needs that require a lot of resource and time in order to learn the behaviors that they need to be productive outside of the building, when they go back to what I, you know, out, you can't live in rehab forever, you do have to return at some point and be able to be productive, and that's our goal. And my staff is very, very, I mean, we do a lot of professional learning weekly around how to deal with students that come from these environments that are severely traumatized. And they are an amazing group of educators that are working daily, day in and day out, to make sure that these students are getting those services. So while the numbers are low, and they have been low, I came post-COVID my first year there, so I wasn't in this building before when it was the way it was. But if you talk to my staff, who a lot of them have been there for 15, 16, 17 years, they talk about those, some of those years as being very dangerous, they were afraid to be at work because the structures were not in place, and we were over, we had the bodies, but it wasn't working necessarily well. So while the number is important, and I hear that we feel like we're not at capacity, we do have room, but I, I would, I would please sort of put this out there, that a return to those days of 200 kids in that building probably isn't good for anyone, the students or the staff in that building. And I, to your point, I think the process for getting students into the program has changed over the last three years, it's gone through several iterations. So there's some room for us to grow in terms of, it used to be a little harder, and it caused a lot of frustrations with homeschools, so building that back, so they recognize that it's not that difficult anymore. They literally just have to fill out the thing, and they get a meeting, and, and, and we're there to support them. So, but thank you for that feedback, I think that's important, that, that people understand that we're there, and we do have room, and there are kids that need to be in our building. I mean, they need to be there, because we're, my staff is so amazing, and I know they can do great things for these kids. So I just wanted to share that a little bit, because it, it gets lost in the talk of numbers.
I'm sorry, could I say something in relation to that? I'll keep it really quick, but I just want to say, like, the topic of behavior is a very nuanced issue, and I agree with everything that you said. I think that when we are looking at how to fix the behavior problem, just shoving kids into another school, getting them out of the environment that they were in, is not the correct answer, nor is it the only answer. I think that when it comes to behavior, students are dealing with a multitude of things, and removing them, like, like removing like the rotten apples from the good bunch. I think that that is a very presumptive and a very, like, one-sided way of looking at things. If we're talking about behavior, we also need to talk about, also health, we need to talk about school safety, we need to talk about the school, the overall school environment. And in this discussion, I think that those are topics that are very overlooked, because we are more interested in taking these kids out of schools so that the kids who want to learn can learn, which, yes, that has reason to it, and that has weight to it. However, we also need to look at how we can make these students who don't want to come to school, who have behavior issues, how we can make them into those students who want to go, come to school. So that's just what I wanted to add.
Very cogent points, thanks so, so much. Thanks so, so much, Daphne. Anybody else?
Just, I'm glad you put that context on it because I think that, that it does, it's, it shouldn't be just about, let's throw everybody in there. And, but I think it, we do need to figure out how can we address those behaviors in the schools that they're in. And, and I'd love to come out, I, I do want to come out and visit, and I'd like to get down to South High and see what he's doing out there. And I think it sounds like y'all are headed in that direction. So anyway, just a comment.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ram, I think you're going to join us while we look at our board norms. The board norms are revised or reviewed by us every year. They were revised a year ago, and they're in your packet. So I'm not sure if anyone needs me to go over them verbatim. It's really plain ice in the end. The number one thing is that we do things in the best interest of students. Go ahead, Dr. Mrs. Ram.
This is really your work session, as these are the board's norms and communication processes. I'm just sitting here with a different colored pen, noting any changes that you have or to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody?
I would just say, number 14 has been, for many, I think, very confusing. I, I would almost like that to be an unwritten rule where you just know that, you know, hey, you go and contact the principal, you do that because there's so much confusion around number 14 on the norms that I feel like we should just make that be a, an unwritten rule and just have professional courtesy when we're going out there, knowing that, like, hey, maybe it's not the best day to go check out a school the day before Christmas, or, you know, when, when they're sitting there trying to do some testing or something like that, you know? Like, like, I think, I think the confusion around that just kind of jumbles things up, and I, I think it'd be nice to just remove number 14.
But, but you agree that we need to contact school principals before we go? And then just text Dr. Savine that we're on our way?
I mean, what, I mean, like I said, I mean, I think maybe that's where the confusion comes in. I don't know. I mean, there's, I know that, you know, for me, I'm, I don't know, I just, I just feel like the confusion behind it, in my four years here, I've been to visit, and I, I thought I did things the right way, where I called the superintendent and said, hey, I'm going to be there, then apparently that was wrong. I had to call the principal, so I called the principal, and, and that wasn't right. So then it, it's just like, you know, we, we shouldn't have to jump through hoops. And I feel like this is just another rule we're adding to ourselves that, quite frankly, I, I think is, is confusing. Because, like I said, in my four years here, I've done things many different ways, and none of them have been right. So.
Okay. That's fair enough.
Mr. Evans, to your point, I agree in terms of the professional courtesy and recognizing that our, our principals want our board members in the schools that are proud of the work as a team, superintendent and the central office team. We, we welcome engagement and interest in our board, in our schools. But the professional courtesy, recognizing that principals may, they have typically a, a schedule and so forth, so from a professional standpoint, just a, a courtesy notification. Because the reality is, when a, a principal hears from a board member, whether they have something, if they have something scheduled, they're probably going to say, hey, yeah, they're going to clear their schedule and make that happen. So I think just that professional courtesy piece, and, and certainly, while it's, it's not required, but I think what was understood is just a, a notification of the superintendent, not approval of the superintendent, but just notification. But I think the most important thing is the, just professional courtesy and respecting that are building principals who want to see you in their schools, but just giving a, you know, whether it's a, a day or two-day notice, so that way they can make adjustments to their schedule, because they're going to want to be there for you when they're, when you're in their buildings. Does that makes, is that?
Perfect sense, yeah.
And I think that's something that we've always done. I know you and I have visited schools together in the past, and, you know, we emailed the principal and also CC'd Dr. Savine, hey, Tuesday, we'd like to come and visit your school, would that be okay? And that way you know that we have emailed the principal and that we, you know, if Tuesday's not okay. And I've had principals say, well, I'm going to be out of the building, and I, you know, so could we make it another day? And they choose another day, and, you know, it makes it all fine.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Yes, Daphne.
I don't have anything to add to this discussion, but for point A, I have a very small suggestion that may seem trivial, but I think adding all students instead of just students, because, you know, as board members, we have the duty to represent all, all demographics of students, not just people from one area or one, one demographic. So I think that, yeah, adding, making that change so that we are reminded, not just as this board, but in future boards, that we are a board of all students of every race, every gender, every sexuality, et cetera.
Are we talking about one?
Yes.
Okay.
Point one.
Sorry.
So make decisions that are in the best interest of all students.
But back to Mr. Evans, what if we just, could, could we just say, provide a professional courtesy, contact to the school principals?
Yeah, we, we can certainly make any of the changes you're looking for. If we're trying to clarify so that it's easier to follow, we can say professional courtesy notification, we could change it to schedule, because I also heard there was concerns that principals won't be able to clear their schedule. So I just, what exactly are we looking for? Just to clear it up or change it?
I don't want to be turned away from a school because they haven't received superintendent approval.
Understood. Well, it just says currently with notification, it doesn't require superintendent approval. So it could be that we need to make that clarification on the operational side. Dr. Savine?
Yeah, I'll just add, it's, it's a fair, fair point. In this discussion, wherever we, we land, and I do like the suggested language in terms of professional courtesy, when this is updated on our monthly principal meetings, we can make this a point of, of emphasis so that they recognize that it doesn't require superintendent approval, it's just a courtesy notification.
Thank you.
So what I'm hearing is, do we maybe want to change it to provide professional courtesy to school principals prior to visitations? Or visits, school visits? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you're hearing, right?
I mean, I, I kind of want it just gone and just have it be an unwritten rule, but if it needs to be there, then I think that's fine.
Okay. Anybody else have any other of the 14 points that they want to?
I have a clarifying question.
Okay.
Sorry, as I'm capturing this, are we keeping the notification to superintendent in there? Okay. Thank you.
We'll text you.
How was it? Did you say no on that?
I'm sorry, Charlie.
Yes.
You're keeping the superintendent in?
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, you're just going to say, use professional courtesy when arranging for visitations.
I wrote, provide professional courtesy to school principals prior to visits.
Okay, that sounds great.
That's fine.
With notification to the superintendent.
That's fine. No, that's fine.
Are we okay with the rest of them?
Yes.
Do we want to add all students like Daphne suggested?
Well, we already did that, didn't we?
Oh, we did?
I don't think we discussed that.
Okay. Is there any discussion of number one? Make decision.
Basically, it says students. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, students represents everybody.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't mean you have to add another word, but the interest of students, and that's what we have here, students. So I don't think all is important to add that.
Got it, okay with you, Daphne.
I think that making that distinction is important because students doesn't necessarily encompass all students. Students can be, those students over there are those students. So I think having all students, having that clarifying, because, or if we're looking at it in your way, either way, it doesn't really matter. So adding all wouldn't, either, wouldn't really even matter.
In our board policies, we have used each student. We have changed to that, offering as a suggestion. It doesn't make a difference to me. That's just something else we've done in some of our board policies. Mr. Evans will recall, we've added each student to signify that we mean every student we serve, but.
Again, I'm, I'm a firm believer of, when you add something, it's hard to take out. So I don't like to add things that basically says the exact same thing. It's because we represent students.
Right.
I, I'm seeing lots of heads shaking. So, Daphne, we're going to go ahead and go with how it is.
I think when you add all the extra words, out of respect to you, I think when you add all the extra words, it makes an assumption that people aren't going to be for all students. And I don't think that's the case of anybody serving on the board here. I think when we chose to run, we ran with all students in mind and all teachers and all administrators.
Which means we're ready to go into the operating norms and the communication process? Mrs. Ram, are they called guidance counselors, or is it now just school counselors?
School counselors, I'm being told.
Okay.
So we can make that change.
So we, and number one, we need to change that to school counselors. I only know that because my best friend was a guidance counselor, and somewhere along the lane, became a school counselor, and sometimes I forget.
I will make the change.
So I have a question about B8.
B8?
B, B, yeah, B8.
Yep.
Superintendent will provide a written summary after a closed session that delineates action items? I don't, I don't ever remember that happening. I don't, or, or does it happen, and I'm not sure what we're?
It's, it's, we're currently in practice, it's part of the closed session minutes. So at the bottom of the minutes, there's that little chart, and that's how it's been operating in that.
Okay. And I'll be, I'll be honest with you, kind of to Mike's point, when you start adding stuff, it makes it very difficult to take stuff out, you know? And I, I think, you know, we as board members realize that, you know, not everything is going to only be on Tuesdays from 3:00 to 6:00, or 3:00 to 9:00, or whatever it may be. You know, some, some of the stuff in here is just, and it seems to me like it's more fluff than anything. And I don't even know really where to start because there's so much in it. Like, like on B7, extra time should be built into closed meetings when negotiations or other complex issues are on the agenda. You know, like, I think, I think, you know, at that point, you know, we, I know we go and put our schedules out, if we just have it scheduled that way far enough in advance, I think as long as we have the advance notice, you know, I don't know, I just, I think some of this stuff is a little wordy. And, you know, it, it, because of how much is in it, I think more, less is more in some cases. So I don't really know how to fix it or really have any suggestions, but, you know, it's just kind of my thought on it.
I, I would like to change A7, where the board president shall respond to emails. I think we could put in there, or designate.
I'm fine with that.
Does anybody else have anything?
Who would the designate be?
What?
Who would the designate be?
Whoever the board, it would probably be, it would be whoever the president. If the president couldn't answer emails during that week, they would ask legitimately someone else to answer the mail. But it's not stated there.
Right.
It's not open for just anyone to start.
Answering.
Answering. It's whatever the president decides and says, would you take care of this topic? Or, yeah.
Anything else? Hooray! Okay.
Just in summary, I have noted three changes. One in the operating norms, and then two changes in the communication processes, right?
No, the, the.
The, or designate? No, no, I'm just saying there are not the items. There's only two changes in the one document, one change in the other. Okay.
Thank you. Now for some more serious stuff, we have our board, the presentation of our audit. Jeff Prue, our chief operating officer, Eric Sizzler, our executive director of finance, and Adam Pelk, supervisor of accounting.
Good afternoon. Dr. Zentmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Savine. The team is bringing forward for you the results of the fiscal year 2024 single audit. This is the second portion of the audit that is done by the outside firm of Clifton Larson Allen, otherwise just known as CLA. They were here with you in October at the work session to talk about their review of the financial audit. The single audit looks at internal controls as well as many items related to the use of federal funds. If we have a bit of a mixed opinion this year, and Mr. Pelk's going to walk through with you some of the findings from this year's report. We have some areas that are the best opinion, which is an unmodified opinion. We have a few areas that have a qualified opinion, and we're going to give you the details of those and explain really the action items that we've created as a team to avoid future findings moving forward. So, Mr. Pelk?
Good afternoon. So Jeff kind of talked about, a little bit about the single audit purpose, but. We'll go through, so the objectives are financial accuracy, compliance, internal controls, accountability, trust, transparency, and then ultimately, we get an opinion from CLA. So that's the purpose of the single audit. Wanted to just talk a little bit about the explanation of the different kinds of findings. So there's three different findings. There could be a deficiency, a significant deficiency, and a material weakness. It's really just severity. Deficiency is something that the auditors expect us to change, but there really isn't as much risk as something that would be a material weakness. So it's really just severity as to the, what defines the difference between the two, between the three. All right, so key findings. So first thing I wanted to talk about was the prior year audit finding, a single audit finding, was around suspension and debarment. And this is something that carried over into this year because of when the audit was completed. So the audit was completed in December of last year. We made a change come January, but because six months of the year, we're still under the old way, which we weren't doing the suspension and debarment checks, the audit finding kind of carries forward. It's sort of a two-year thing that happens with that, because we had six months that we didn't know there was going to be a finding, so we had to, we, we then made the change. So that's kind of the prior year finding.
I think it's also important to note in the prior year finding that from last year to this year, we're working with a new audit firm. So there's a difference in guidance from the audit firms from the prior firm to the new firm. So we started a process reviewing suspension, debarment more fully, moving forward with new vendors, where, which was the guidance from the previous auditors. And the new auditors said, no, go backwards, and you've got to get everybody in your system. So we've begun that process, and don't expect this audit, this, this particular finding to continue.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so then the next one is, it's a current year financial audit finding, just something that is in the reports, I wanted to bring it up. We had a finding around journal entry approval. Basically, there wasn't any journal entry approval before, and effective November 3rd, November 7th, I have it somewhere in there, and effective November 3rd, we now have a journal entry approval process. So nobody can just go in, record an entry, approve it, and without anybody knowing it. So somebody else within the finance team has to approve the journal entry before it lands sort of in our, in our financial statements.
I think this is a holdover from prior practice. You know, we've grown our financial team fairly significantly over, I think in the, in the time that I've been here, you know, we had David, executive director of finance, and one accountant. When I started here in 2008, we're now at a team really where Adam is supervisor of accounting and three senior accountants. So we've grown, and so we've had the ability to add controls that weren't really available when you had a single staff accountant working. So we're catching up those processes as we've grown the team.
Yep. And so then the current year's single audit findings, that. That, Mr. Prue kind of mentioned about the material weakness for the suspension and debarment. For two of the four programs that they, that CLA tested, they had vendors that we had prior to what we implemented in January. And because they were prior vendors, we didn't, we didn't review them for suspension and debarment. So that kind of rolls into the material weakness because we didn't check that. But based on our prior auditors, we did need to go back and now they're saying we have to go back. So that's kind of why there's material weakness on that. I'll talk about what our corrective actions are in future slides. And we've already put them into place, so. And.
Do you mind if I interrupt real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
Could you tell us what it was that they saw? If I remember correctly, with the suspension, debarment, I think was in our aviation program, we had a simulator, was that one of them or?
No, this is related really to, the root of it actually is a special ed contractor. So when you're using federal funds, you have to review the suspension and debarment listing produced by the federal government, or you have to get an attestation from the vendor that they're not currently suspended or debarred, to be able to authorize a contract with them and to expend federal dollars with that particular vendor. So if the vendor has not gone through our normal contracting process, which has that in it, then we wouldn't have that attestation. So we've added that to all of our procurements. And if it's a, for instance, if it was something that we knew, let's say it was going to be over $50,000, it would have had our normal bid documents, our normal boilerplate, it was already covered. But if it's a procurement of services less than $50,000, didn't go through the procurement process, we had a few vendors that slid through the cracks. So we've gone back through and honestly, the federal website to review suspension, debarment, as you can imagine, is ridiculous. We were utilizing the state of Maryland site, sort of trusting that state of Maryland is also cross-referencing with, with federal government, but that's the, according to the auditors, they don't believe that's good enough. We need to make sure we're doing what's known as the SAM.gov site or our own attestations.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yep, all good. Okay, and then the last one is a significant deficiency in internal controls around Davis Bacon. So Davis Bacon is around prevailing wages. Prevailing wages is in the area and we are doing a lot, which is part of why it's a significant deficiency and not a material weakness. We are getting weekly files from the contractors saying they are meeting the, I think they're called certified files, weekly certified payroll files saying that they are meeting the Davis Bacon Act. What the auditors had issue with is we don't have evidence that we are truly reviewing them. So the finding that we, or what we have put in place is we're going to have a spreadsheet that tracks when we get it, what the week is for, who is signing off on it, the date they're signing off on it. So it's really just that last piece. We are doing the majority of what the federal government is asking. It's just that last piece of proving that we are reviewing it in a timely basis and I have more on that.
And what was that last thing?
Yeah, sorry.
You said, that last thing, what were you talking about?
Oh, so the signature and proof that we are physically reviewing it on a timely basis. That's the piece we're missing.
So we deal with, in the area of construction, we deal with two different prevailing wage laws. We have the state of Maryland prevailing wage laws that is used whenever we use state capital improvement dollars. And when you get into Davis Bacon, which is the federal law, that's when you're using federal dollars for construction purposes. So in this case, we were using some of our Essor COVID relief dollars on several construction projects, a couple of HVAC projects, a generator project. And the vendors were providing the payroll files as they know they're required to do on a Davis Bacon project because it was bid that way. And we were holding them and we had shared file drops with those vendors. We were holding them, but not actually showing proof that we were looking at them, reviewing to make sure that per each trade, that the trade was being paid at the prevailing wages, identified in the bid documents, and then recording sort of documentation that we were doing that review. So that's the step we were missing because that's not required under the Maryland law. I think it's also important to note though, that none of the vendors were violating the Davis Bacon law. They were all paying the right amount and none of the vendors were suspended or debarred. So I guess, you know, that just catches in making sure that our system is better, so we have the internal controls to prevent any fraud or misuse of funds, but there were no improprieties, just a lack of the control there.
Yep. Yeah, thank you, yeah. And, yeah, I was going to emphasize that of all the stuff they tested, the samples, they've tested 40 samples for each of the projects and they found no actual issues. It's more around the controls rather than finding things that were truly wrong. So just want to emphasize that. All right, so we kind of went through some of these, but this is just a little bit more detail. And this is sort of a summary of what you'll find in your single audit report. Essentially, it's just one by one, what the auditor's recommendation is and the action that we are taking. So I'll go through a little bit about the actions that we're taking since we haven't really discussed that. So for the material weakness and internal controls around suspension and debarment, the additional steps that we are going to be taking moving forward is, we're going to have a couple. So the first step is, we're going to take, our purchasing department is going to be looking at any vendor or any purchase order that is coming through to them that is hitting our restricted fund. So it may be federally funded, it may not be federally funded, but they're going to look at all of it just to make sure we're okay there. So they're going to look at everything and before they convert the requisition to a purchase order, they're going to tag that vendor once they've done a SAM.gov check, which is the website that Mr. Prue was talking about, or have an affidavit from the vendor, affidavit from the vendor saying that they are not suspended or debarred. So that is the step that we're moving forward. And that should make sure that we don't buy anything with federal money with a suspended or debarred vendor.
So do all those findings essentially revolve around the federal funds then?
Yeah, the whole single audit is around federal funds, yes. Yep. All right, so yeah, we talked a little about the journal entries, but the, the action that's taken. So November fifth is when we implemented the journal entry review process. So now they're, it's, it's working as expected. Anytime we book a manual journal entry, somebody has to approve it. We talked about the, this is the current year finding. So this is a little bit repetitive with the prior finding, just because it's around suspended and debarment, but it is a separate finding written in the single audit report. But yeah, same thing, any restricted funding that's coming as a requisition is being reviewed to make sure that vendor has been cleared from a suspension and debarment perspective.
It's essentially one finding, it chooses two, but it's essentially one finding because it hit two different funds. It hit the Essor COVID relief funds and it also hit the IDEA special education funds.
And then we also talked about the Davis Bacon Act. And we already talked through the, the actions that we're going to take on that, but essentially we were going to have a spreadsheet that the maintenance department is going to, or the procurement department is going to keep track of when they're reviewing it and who is reviewing it and sign off on it. So, and I think that's it. Any, any questions?
Basically just one question. So it looks like you've corrected all these things moving forward. Are they still auditing you now or have that stopped? That was the finding and now they'll come back and review those again with you at a certain time?
Yeah, so they're done, they're done their single audit for this year. It will come around again next year. And what will happen since we have material weaknesses, they're going to select more samples because we're considered a higher risk entity for next year. So it'll come around, come around next year.
All right, but at the December board meeting, the board approved the renewal for the coming fiscal year with CLA, so they'll be back. Audit committee will meet with them in June to discuss both the financial audit and the single audit. They'll begin their work right around, they might do some pre-work in June, but begin the majority of their work in, in July and August as the team rolls over the fiscal year. And as you know, the financial audit is due by, to be done and reported by September 30 and then the single audit is December 31. Historically, they've done both audits at the same time. But with the volume of federal funds and all their municipal accounts stemming from the COVID virus, they've not been able to get them at the same time. But I think moving forward, FY 25 should be really our last primary year with COVID relief funds. And we anticipate that potentially next year, we'll get both audits at the same time.
Thank you.
Are purchase orders written manually or is there a way to lock the system where you can't order it? Versus having to like go to a list, check it, sign off that you checked it? Or is it the case that you wouldn't buy from a vendor for, that uses federal funds, but you might buy from them other case that you wouldn't want to lock them out even if you had an automatic?
Yep, exactly. So we could use vendors and really probably shouldn't be using vendors that are suspended or debarked federally for state and local, but the way we're tagging them is we're putting a line somewhere on the vendor screen. So it is very clear for somebody to say, oh, that one's done, we've already checked it and we have the support attached to say, we've checked SAM.gov or we've got an affidavit.
It's all tied together in our ERP system, financial system.
That's what I'm just using, you can block them, but maybe that's not the right answer. I just was trying to eliminate a step.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Mrs. Ram, if you'll join us again for our core values for the legislative program.
Thank you. For returning board members, I'll note the, the two changes. For all board members, this was a draft that was discussed at a work session and the strikeouts in blue were changes made since that work session. So I just want to point out on page three and four, since that last work session, we, on paragraph five, we needed to, we being staff, reviewed that and after that discussion realized we needed to change some language to clarify that we were specifically talking about recertification, not new certification of nationally board certified teachers. So that's why that change is there. And then on page, pages five and then seven and eight. On page five, based on my understanding of feedback from the board, that a safe and secure learning environment is, is essential and key. And it wasn't specifically highlighted previously. So on page five, under local control, I added that phrase that the local boards should be setting their own policies and I added that to emphasize it. And then on page seven and mostly eight, I was trying to capture the board's intent and so open the feedback of what you were looking to add in terms of ensuring classroom order and discipline to protect the learning environment. So those are the changes in blue from what was previously there. Now I have another colored pen, ready for edits.
Well, I will say that I kept on trying to click the safe and secure learning environment when I was reading this because it looked like a hyperlink.
So it's way track changes, my track changes are blue.
I need red or green, yeah, yeah. So, you know, this is something that, I never really said anything because I didn't know exactly what to think about it, but, you know, and the, we're talking about our state legislative priorities and the very first thing is adequate and equitable local and state funding. And all that seems pretty.
Which page are you on?
The core values, whatever page that is. Probably the first one. So we go and say adequate and equitable local and state funding. And then we, in the very next breath, we go and say that we want to maintain local control. And I think where, where my concern comes in is we're advocating for us to maintain local control. At the same time, we know when we go and say adequate and equitable local and state funding, that means that we're asking the state to require the local governments to pay more and more money without any say into that. So I, I struggle with the verbiage or the meaning of it or whatever it may be when we go and say, we want local control, but we don't really care about the other governments. That, to me, kind of seems contradictory, if that makes sense.
Are you talking about on page five?
The core values, I don't know.
Well, there, yeah.
About local control.
Yeah, page two, yeah.
Page two just lists us to local control. And then on page five delineates the subsections of local control. So I would think it's page two and page five. Mr. Evans, does that seem right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Opposing any legislation that would transfer the, the cost to the county government.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not exactly sure what I want to say, but it's, it's just something that's been on my mind. You know, we, we're asking them to mandate certain things at the local level at the same time we say that we want local control. You know, and for us, we know what that means when we say local control. It's for us, when we get to decide how we spend our money, the discipline or whatever it may be. But at the same time, part of that, part of what that actually means, the spirit of it, it doesn't actually say it in there, but the spirit of it, based on what I'm reading, is that we want state laws requiring the local governments to give us more money. And I don't know how fair that would be if we're looking at maintaining local control. Does that make sense?
It does. And my, this is years of iteration and long before my time as well. And, and my understanding, and it's also pages three, so it's really two, three, four and five. I, I believe that, and we can make any language tweaks, obviously, this is the boards, not, not staffs. The local control initially in a lot of the conversations had to do with making certain that taking funding out to make sure the board, local board knows the system best and should be implementing the policies best to serve the students and community. We certainly could parse out anything that has to do with funding or finance, but I also believe part of it had to do with loosening up some of the controls on how we can spend money, that when the state, and I'm seeing nods, so I think I'm thinking this correctly. When the state gives us money, the boards, local boards should be able to determine how it's spent and not have so many strings attached. I, I'm seeing head nods from some of our veteran board members.
I don't necessarily disagree with, with much of it, but like I said, just when we go and talk about that, are we, I don't know, maybe I'm nitpicking or not, I don't know. Like I said, I don't even know what I wanted to say. It's just something that I've always been uneasy about because we should have local control, right? They don't know, Annapolis is very different than Washington County. You know, so we should have local control, but at that same point, when we start talking about funding, there are state laws on how they fund and what, are we making it more strict on the local government too? You know, that's, that's really my concern and I, I'll kind of leave it at that because I don't, I don't really know what my, what my solution is. So I just wanted to put that out there for, for discussion.
I think I'm hearing you say Maryland is America in miniature and we're as different from, we both taught in Anarundel County and I in Baltimore City. There just isn't any comparison, that's why we have to have local control on what we're doing.
Right.
Okay.
And that part is in there and I want that to stay, you know?
Yeah, I believe that's, you're talking about on page five, paragraph one. I'm, I'm hearing, maybe you're talking more about. Yeah, you're talking about, I mean, I see some of the funding piece on page six, but that talks about fully funding from the state and then there's a lot of funding kind of pieces on pages three and four.
Yeah, and, and so like I said, more it's, it is about the, you know, when, when you go and look at it, like the, the funding to improve school buildings, you know, we have to have a certain amount of local dollars for that. And, you know, I mean, I think that's all fine and well, we should have some, some skin in the game there. You know, we have the maintenance of effort in there. I mean, maintenance of effort isn't even there anymore, right? Now we're on the blueprint formula, but who knows what that looks like now? You know, I just, for me, more, I was just kind of looking at the core value of it. You know, the, just that, that blanket statement of adequate and equitable local and state funding. I think maybe it should be more adequate and equitable state funding and maybe take the local part out of it because, you know, we know that the lion's share and they do it with a formula and proportionality of students or whatever. But when you go and look at it, you know, the, the, the lion's share of the state money stays in the central part of the state. And so.
You're wanting to take references to local funding out.
So wouldn't that be remitted to three, under adequate and equitable local and state funding? Like maintenance of effort?
Yeah.
I think it would be page two, we would strike the word local and have adequate and equitable state funding. Does that sound right? And then, yes, to your point Ms. Beachley, we'd have to do some retooling of some of the other sub-paragraphs on page. the other sub-paragraphs on pages three and four.
But we might want to be very careful in removing the maintenance of effort with not knowing what blueprint is going to be looking like, because we may have to fall back to that, and then we would not have any, so we wouldn't have anything really to, to balance that.
And saying local, and saying local is just, it's not putting a dollar amount on it. It's not saying you have to give us $3 million or else. It's, it's just, it's, it's a broad statement.
To Daryl's point, though, I think we just don't want the state to defer to the county because we're getting as much as we can possibly get.
Yeah, and I think hearing all this, especially Mr. Gassford's point on the maintenance of effort piece, we probably could retweak some of this and strike the word local, but still keep the spirit of it, keeping maintenance of effort, but tweaking it a bit, but removing that emphasis on local since this is our agenda to the state. I mean, we could do that.
I, I, and I do like the way that sounds. I just think that sometimes the county commissioners would like to give us more money, but based on prior laws with maintenance of effort, if they did give us more, then their, their formulas and percentages were based on the extra amount they, that they gave us, it almost penalizes them. So, in times when, you know, of high inflation, they're trying to keep their costs and taxes down, if the year before, they were able to give us some extra money, then they get penalized when they say, you know, we, okay, that was extra money, that was one-time money, and, you know, and I just think that sometimes, sometimes when we go and add more laws like that, it, it really kind of gives them a reason to not give us money, too, when maybe we do need it, you know?
I can tell you when, as serving as commissioner for those two years, when the board would come and ask for additional funding, it was a little scary to say, okay, let's give them the extra funding because we might not have that next year, but yet we got to maintain that level.
So, that's why they, they go with the...
They give us CIP.
CIP money, yeah.
Which is limited, right? That's how you can spend it.
That's a one-time give. They don't have to continue maintenance effort, you know, it just keeps, you have to keep, there's that, that safety threshold that, you know, they can't take it away when you've already budgeted it for years, years, and years, and they can't pull it out from you. I think that was the safety mechanism for that maintenance effort. I don't really care for it, and if blueprint would be, you know, sustainable, which I don't think it will be, at least not right now, you know, I don't think us leaving maintenance of effort is going to give us any more money. I don't think the county's going to do that. They're going to give it to us through a CIP, a one-time give, you know, for projects, roofs, you know, boilers, things like that. I mean, I think they've always said, we're willing to do those type of things, we just don't want to be locked down because then we're going to have to give it to you, like you said, each year, and, and that's really not fair to the county. Right. So...
Do you want me to play, or I can't do this off the top of my head at this moment for that, but I can, I could try, but I could play around with some language options, and then I can distribute that to the board.
Am I right? These are kind of like the guidelines that we're telling the, our representatives to kind of go by when they're voting, right?
When we send people to Annapolis, this is what they lobby for.
Okay.
This is what we believe in, so this is what we want. Give it to us now. Anybody else have anything to add?
I think she's trying to look for a direction.
Correct, Mr. Gassford.
Are you doing this right now?
I, no, I'm saying if, if it's the will of the board, I can give some sample language options, distribute it, and then the board can provide feedback, and we can...
We have, what is our, I mean, we're looking at a draft here, but this was already supposed to be submitted to legislation.
When is the session over?
Well, the session, session opens tomorrow, and our delegation is aware, and my office has been in communication with the delegation, that we would be forthcoming likely with a approved legislative agenda at the January business meeting. So, what we can do is, I can play around with some language and give options, and at the meeting, when you vote on it, we can amend to say we like paragraph A versus B, and then vote on that, so that hopefully, we would have something.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they want to add for the good of the order? Dr. Savin? We're adjourned.